But you're.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The end before they start, if there's any public comments, please sign in or later. Um, next is approval of today's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. And then I'll say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval minutes of eight fourteen twenty twenty four.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the August fourteenth twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in any discussion. Very none or all favors say aye.
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 Uh, most carries next is approval claims for payment of eight twenty one twenty twenty four.
Make motion to approve the August twenty first twenty twenty four claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none or all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is consideration approved, the Hart County Courthouse Emergency Action Plan. Thomas, did you want to talk on that?
Sure. So, part of the process of the emergency plan, we've taken multiple policies, fire policy, bomber policy, evacuation policy, we've made it all one. And then you'll notice on top, um, I didn't bring one with me, but you'll notice it says location. What else? So what our plan is, is to do one of these for each of the buildings, not, probably not the road shops, but administration or annex building, sheriff's office, and then county roads, engineers, building will have one of these so that we take multiple policies and put it in one. So the employees have no one place to go for all the information.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the courthouse emergency action plan as presented.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none or all favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is consideration through utility permit UT twenty four zero one eight.
Make motion to approve utility twenty four dash oh one eight. It's, I'm on communications LLC. Underground permanent installation of a public hotel.
I will second that.
Spin moved and seconded in discussion. Very none or all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is consideration resolution twenty twenty four twenty eight public records request. This is something that after the department head we uh, they brought up to us. It's something that um, our insurance companies brought up to us years ago.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. Um, Daryl, do you want to speak on some of this? I had you draw out a.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Well, when the insurance company, they, they gave it to us as an ordinance.
Right, um.
So I had you change it to resolution.
This has been something that has sort of been on the back burner and it kind of moves to the front burner once in a while. Usually there's probably two years or four years. We get a lot of open records requests during election cycles. Sometimes it's about voting machines, voting records, things like that. And um, I'll give you an example of a couple of months ago, we had a request, um, somebody wanted all the communications on a particular subject. So I go to IT and I ask them, can you produce, you know, the, the records that would or be responsive to this request and see how big the universe is? Well, it was thirteen hundred and seventy eight pages. And some of those are not pages, but documents, files or communications, and some of those communication strings have multiple back and forth. And so are some of these, are all these responsive to the requests? Are some of them confidential? Does it contain confidential information? It's very time consuming for me to look at fourteen hundred records um, to do that. There are seventy five exceptions for confidential information under the public records, chapter, chapter twenty two. And so we can't just print something off and shoot it out because we have an obligation to protect confidential information. And so anyway, it can be very time consuming. On the other hand, like last week, I think it was when we had the Turkey quarries um, matter come up from two thousand and fifteen. Van Cutler had made a request for records, March to April, the minutes from two thousand and fifteen, very specific, very narrow. Now produce that in ten minutes. There really is no uh, time off task for that. In chapter twenty two, subsection three anticipates things that you can respond to quickly and things that are going to take more time. And in the legislature's wisdom, those that are going to take more time, we need, we are able to charge for that, but we have to give the requesting party uh, an estimate. And so we do have to see how big the universe is. Maybe they'll narrow their request. Maybe they can um, make some other adjustments to whatever their request is to kind of focus it into what they're really looking for rather than it being just kind of a big fishing expedition. So this policy um, was provided to us by Heartland. It was a little dated and it was actually drafted originally as an ordinance. The, the draft that we received from them, because it only said that there were seventy three exceptions to the open records request, but there's actually seventy five now. So we made, we've updated that draft and turned it into a resolution. And so I think this will help the department heads um, handle requests that are, are fairly burdensome. And I think it's just fair to the taxpayers that they're compensated for the time and the legislature has made that provision to recover the time lost for these, you know, well, you know, very broadly request, broad requests. So I'd ask you to adopt it.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty 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 four twenty eight. I will second it.
Spin moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all favors say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Bej, aye.
Renee, aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is consideration approved resolution twenty twenty four twenty nine. Placing the imposition of a local hotel motel tax in the unincorporated areas of Harton County on the election ballot.
I will make a motion to um, approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty nine regarding placing the imposition of a local hotel motel tax in the unincorporated area of Harden County on the election ballot.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. It would be a seven percent tax. Uh, fifty percent of it has to go to something that economic development is what uh, I believe we put on there. And this is for the people in the unincorporated areas to vote on. All we're doing is putting on the ballot. If they want it, great. They don't. They make the decision. Any other comments? Very none, roll call.
Bej.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Yeah, most carries. Next is change of status for conservation department Tate Miller.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Tate Miller effective eight twenty one twenty four. Um, this is the end of seasonal employment. So it's um, it's just, this would be, yeah, more or less resignation. He'll be done for the season.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in any discussion. Yeah, it's kind of weird. Sometimes they come back, but the resignation helps with the insurance because otherwise we have to insure them with part-time help, even though they're not working at us. Any other discussion? Very none or all favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Other business. I know I got Lori.
Yeah.
I just wanted to um, state that we're going to be at ISAC. Quite a few department heads for training, for affiliate training. And on Thursday, Cheryl and I both are be gone, will be gone on sort of part-time help. We'll have the office open from eight to um, two thirty. So our office will be closed at two thirty and recordings will not happen until Friday. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Good. Any other business? Public comments?
Look at Bee Smuck.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bee Smuck and I'm here to ask you guys as the Harden County supervisors not to let Summit CO2 Pipeline build through Harden County. My husband and I will not sign permissions to put the pipeline to our property. I have seen where the governor has declared eminent domain of private property. Eminent domain is the power of the government to take private property for public use. Examples of public use include roads, railroads, government buildings, hospitals, et cetera. This is not intended for elected officials to grant it to people who donate the largest amounts of money to their campaign. This is also anyone else who should be representing the people that put them in office. Summit CO2 Pipeline is a private business and only benefits the business owners and their investors. Two such investors are China and South Korea. If there should be a leak in the pipeline proposed, the poisonous gas would settle to the lowest area from the leak. We live approximately an eighth of a mile from where they tend to place the pipeline. Our acreage sits in a little dip where the road is higher to the south and to the north. We babysit for our grandchildren every week. And once school is in session, we have grandchildren getting off the school bus and they need a place to stay occasionally until their parents get home from work. Our oldest son has cattle on our acreage and his family, two of which are grandchildren, are there doing chores daily. One of our granddaughters writes her bike out and he held to visit us. Our youngest son farms the land. They want to put the pipeline on and this puts him in danger. There are no regulations concerning distance, maintenance, et cetera of the proposed pipeline, if and only if it were to be built. We are asking county supervisors to help us in preventing this pipeline from being built and people losing their lives over someone else's greed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, that's Smuck. I can't do much more than what Bee did. Look at all this. No return address. If I receive anything like this, it comes from my tax man, okay? We were notified and we were over eighty. We're scanned. Okay? We were notified we were to come pick up all these forms. And this gave Summit Farms uh, pipeline correction. This gave them permission to go through my ground anywhere they want and survey just by signing this. No return address, no nothing. If the post office knows how to return it, therefore they should have put who, who it was from and y'all, I would not have accepted this information. I agree with Bee. This is not a government access. This is a private, private person who's wanting to get through and he is using China again. We cannot keep saying that we don't want China coming in. And then we say, sure, go right across my farm ground. They're hitting a lot of my farm ground. They're going under where we've paid you guys a lot of money for our tiling system that we just had to go through and put that down. How is this pipeline? It can't improve that, or I mean, it can't do anything but harm all that, that tiling that we have done. So on top of all these papers saying that I'm giving them permission, they can come on my door, they can do whatever they want. I can't stop them. I don't agree with this. If they wanted to do something, take it down the state line where the, the state has uh, property that the governor has already given permission for to put, you know, highway twenty, highway thirty five, take it down there. Do not cut across my farm ground. There's no way you guys or anybody else can convince any of us here that you're not going to wreck my farm ground for years and years and years. I've heard reports where they did this and they said you could land an airplane on the ground because they packed it so hard. How am I going to farm? How's my children or my grandchildren going to farm? So this is what I accepted? Unknowing what it was is a scam to the senior citizens. Now, you guys okay it? They can come on my property, they can do whatever they want, they can come to my door, I cannot stop them. Is that right? Is it right that they ruined my tiling? You guys just chart, we've just paid two hundred thousand a couple of years ago to you guys to put a tiling through? And now you're going to let them come through?
Lance, do you want to?
Well, you're, we're talking drainage.
I was going to say, do you want to, we can address it in drainage?
Wait, but we don't have drainage today, so.
Okay.
Um, so the drainage.
I mean, that's a big part of it. I don't want these gases. I don't want this exploding on my property. We also have grandchildren, we have great grandchildren, the same as Bee on our property. And do I want to have them be at my place when one of these things get washed and explode? I mean, you know, I'm a senior citizen and got scanned. Okay, so I'm going to die having it explode. Okay, but I don't want.
Can we, can, I see, I don't know what you.
How many of these want to know they?
Yeah, I don't.
They're all the same.
What, I don't know what they are. Yeah.
Well, to my knowledge, the, the.
Then I open your mouth.
You can open my mouth. I'll give you permission.
I just don't know what you, what they sent you.
Okay.
Would you mind reading the plot in there that actually tells them what right they have as Summit Carbon Solution on their serving? It's a long plot and it's all inclusive.
Daryl, have you seen these? I don't know. I'm gonna, I'll.
Here, I'll be happy to give you one.
Here, you can give this one so it doesn't open another.
Oh, you should. Well, it doesn't matter if I open them or not because I've received them.
And I don't know what the process for.
But they definitely should have a return address that a senior citizen.
Yeah, what did the green part of it say when it was delivered?
It didn't. This is the way it was. You know, my husband.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the return address, but this would, this was a card that.
These are all just.
Yeah.
But there what should have been a card in between here.
Address.
Yeah.
But there's nothing.
Huh, well, there, that's the return address there.
Well, yeah, but my tax guys from up there and uh, pains.
I can address your drainage question easier. So the drainage, when you say you paid us two hundred thousand, you, you didn't.
Well, I'm not.
Yeah, you didn't pay the county two hundred thousand, you paid two hundred thousand for the cost of the drainage pipe on your districts.
Correct.
Yeah, we're just, we're just trusting.
Yeah, okay.
Just making sure.
It, it.
That's our version of them.
Yeah.
Right.
And it does affect.
And, and we did put ordinances in play for the drainage side for this pipeline as well to help protect that.
Not just this pipeline, but any.
Any, yes. So that, that was put into play.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, the utility board is the one that decides whether or not this pipeline is coming through.
We have no say.
All we can do is try to protect our infrastructure as best as we can. I just want to make sure the two hundred thousand wasn't paid to the county. It was paid for the services that you guys got.
Correct. Nevertheless, that is underground there that this pipeline is going to possibly affect. We don't know. They can put it anywhere they want. Cause I just gave them an okay by picking these up.
Have you, uh, so you weren't part of the original um, area? So were you part of the original citing area for the Summit Carbon Solutions? Or, or is yours?
This is the new one, correct?
It's.
The new spur? So the public meeting for yours is coming up in a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
We attended the other, I think the next one is the twenty ninth.
Yeah, the six P M. meeting, yeah.
But what good is it that I've already given them permission? By accepting these, these envelopes, it says I have given them permission to come on my property anywhere, anytime they want. The way I understand it.
I'm not an attorney to answer that question.
We have talked to our, our personal attorney. And he says the sneaky way that they've done this, I guess I just located. But yet I had no knowledge of what these papers were.
Right. I.
And on top of that, I think that gives them permission on every acre that we own.
Yeah.
Whether it's even in the in the area or not.
I would have a hard time believing that if you, let's just say you owned land in Chickasaw County.
Oh, come.
No, no, but just the Harden County or?
Just the Harden County.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
I didn't know because I know that in other right of entry that there are uh, entities that it opens you up to pretty much everything.
This is Harden County.
So just, okay.
This is just the.
So if you had a parcel near me in Witten, that would, or is it just?
Yeah.
Right, in Harden County.
In Harden County.
Yeah, and I don't know, Daryl, have you ever seen this document before?
Yeah, I don't think so. So.
Well, you're welcome to one of them.
We have a few extra down here.
Yeah.
And they're all going to say I'm disparaged, yeah.
Well.
It's only goes to, through the third year of crap laws.
I'd like to give you an answer, but I can't.
But can you imagine what it would be? For the third year, they're not giving me a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
No.
And like we've understood, they packed that, they ruined that ground for a lot more than three years.
But they're going to repair the tile. I mean, they're going to tell you they are. They're going to go through six sixteen inch tile that the county supposedly put in.
They will go under.
Counting all the tile that I've put in.
So, so in our policy, they will go under that tile.
Then they're going to have free.
As a drainage, the drainage tile. They, they need to go under the, the district tile. And we will have our guy out there who's also, the county inspector is also our drainage engineer to verify. Now, as a county inspector, he cannot stop them if they're doing something wrong. Why have an inspector there? He just documents it. Well, it's kind of weird, but on the other hand, he, he can document it, but when it comes to drainage tile, I believe he can stop. If, if they are not doing according to the drainage law, which is our policies for the drainage tile, they need to stop their progress and do that. So we can protect the district tile. That's, that's our job.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And, and.
The private tile? No.
And we've even had, well, in the last six months, we've had other utility companies for fiber optic through drainage tile instead of boring under as prescribed by the drainage code and our utility permit uh, verbiage, and they've had to come out and do a significant amount of work. And that was all caught by our drainage engineer. So.
And we do have people argue the fact that uh, they don't like paying the fees for crossing drainage tile. Well, on the other hand, who's going to pay the damages? Who's going to pay for that guy to observe to make sure that they are adherent to it? Otherwise, we could have millions of dollars of damages done by them breaking the tile.
Yeah.
So we, we try to protect the district as much as we can, all the districts, there's two hundred and some districts in this county. And we try to protect it as best as we can, but on the other hand, this thing's state and federal pushing this thing through um, all we can do is try to protect our infrastructure that's already in play.
Is there any way that you could regulate by footage away from a farmstead like you did the windmills?
They, they use the word safety.
Yeah.
Once you use that word, we're in trouble.
So you can't regulate anything, any distance in?
Not that I'm aware of at this point.
I know other counties have tried that and ended up with serious litigation at the expense of the taxpayers as well. And so I don't know if you're aware that uh, Attorney Meyer is heavily invested in this. Uh, we, Thomas Creighton, our emergency management coordinator that was here earlier, he testified about the safety aspects of that. Uh, I know that uh, we've been in contact with the THMSA folks about the, the safety uh, aspect as well. So uh, I, I believe that right now that our best course is what we've uh, been doing at this point and the legal counsel we've received is what we're following.
So they have the right to go ahead and take our land, go through there, no matter how much danger it is to our family.
They said there is.
Been down there too, Lance.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they say they're not going to have any damage. Okay, they have.
Yep.
I would also just like to know why our governor.
I'm not the governor.
I know that. I know that. I would, I would like to know why the governor of Iowa just said, okay. Money, money, of course, we understand. I didn't say that.
I, I can't.
I know. But you know what we're saying.
Yeah, right.
And there's states around us, their governors said, no, not at this time. They're not going to be doing this. They don't want this coming onto their property. They don't want our, our governor said, okay, do what you want. I, I don't understand. Well, I do understand it, read, I do understand it, how you get paid off uh, to a decision, but uh,
Doesn't make it right.
How can you put a mount on people's lives? How can the?
You never can.
The governor is doing, yeah, she's sitting up there far away from all this and, and.
You know, I showed this letter to one person and it came back, can we send this to our supervisors? The supervisor is Madison County. Where is our governor from? Madison County.
Well, I can.
There's a lot of mad disgusted people, yes.
Oh, yeah, there is. A lot more than what you see here. It's a lot of illegal stuff that's happening just because of greed. Take it down the interstate. If it's going to explode, let it explode on, on the state's territory, not on my private territory. They don't want to do that because they're afraid, ooh, something goes wrong. Look what'll happen. Put it down, those people, they're going to be dead anyway in a few years. Cause like I said, I'm a senior citizen. This is not affecting me as much it is my children who will be farming the ground. So I guess, am I done?
There's nothing you guys can do for the ordinance restriction on how far this can be from.
No.
Not that we're aware of, you know.
Other counties that have done it have been sued in federal court and lost.
Yeah.
We're pending right now.
Yeah.
Wish you're not right. And, and then it.
Local, local control is, is a thing of the past.
Basically, you have, you buy a place, it's not yours.
Correct.
Paying, paying taxes on, it's not yours.
Correct.
I worked my whole life buying this ground and now the governor and her little friend can come through and do what they want to it.
It, it appears that, that, that it's going to be met with hurdles. There's counties that are objecting or doing things.
There's states governors who are objecting.
Correct, but we have a a legislature, the governor, executive actions are typically reserved for a special purpose to where the legislatures need to do their job.
Okay, so this is presented to our senators.
I'm not.
Did it go to the legislation and then to the senators to vote on? Before it's passed or how?
Well, the House and the Senate are the two chambers of the Iowa, you know.
The House, the Senate, the governor are the three chambers of Iowa law.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying Democrat, Republican.
No, no, no.
What I am saying is right now, it's all. What I am saying is right now, it's all Republicans that are in there to make these decisions.
Correct.
I mean, in the Senate, in national or county or everything, they're all Republicans.
Right, but the process, yeah, it goes back to the old schoolhouse rock thing of of, you know, how is a bill become a bill or become law? And and the legislation stalled in the Iowa Senate, plain and simple. The the Iowa House overwhelmingly approved legislation that would put. Better measures in to protect landowners, and it stalled in the Iowa Senate.
Yeah, and I know senators.
Yeah, yeah. So uh those controls and the voice of the people was stopped in the Iowa Senate. And I think that uh the voice of the people, like Robert Witness last night, is that change is necessary. And so the people spoke last night, and I think in November, the people will speak. So that the legislative process is more judicious.
Well, can they speak to say, take this down your your state line that you already had because this is a private person?
I'm not sure, Robert, was that ever brought up when you were lobbying?
I will speak when I'm up there.
Okay.
So basically what I'm saying or hearing, no, it's not that, you're you're ask. You're asking us to answer for the state and the feds.
I want somebody to answer for me.
And and we definitely can't because they don't listen to us.
Well, you're one step above us to have.
Well, if if, and I don't know whether you have the authority to that point, but if you can set up a rule. What do I say, half a mile from a well farmstead?
So we have a conditional use permit that's been put in place since nineteen ninety nine for pipelines. Long before this was even a pipe dream, there's been an ordinance put in place.
How far?
In Harden County.
How how far away from our?
I I don't know what's all in the ordinance, I I don't remember on that, they aren't even acknowledging that. They went right to the state and jumped us.
And that's not right.
No, they're they're taking local control away.
Yeah, we voted for you guys, and now you're saying you can't do anything.
No, cause they jumped us, they.
There there's a lot of things that we are jumped on, we used, I used to be the chairperson of the mental health board, the state. Yep.
And all the money we had with it.
We, the county intervened. Um at the I U B, now it's the I U C, which I I'm the utility board outside, we utility commission. Um but we intervened and we litigated, and the. Remedies that are available through the administrative process of the I U B are now exhausted, and now there are appeal rights that. Um parties have, and we are considering what those, you know, what our next move is. Um to appeal, talking to other counties that have been involved intervening as well, and I I really wouldn't wanna. Talk a lot about what specifics, you know, our options are, but but right now, we can. The window for appealing is is open, and we would appeal to district court. Um if that's what the county chose to do, so we aren't doing nothing, we are continuing to litigate, and we still have some litigation options. Available to us.
But these guys can start anywhere on my property after this next meeting, because I signed those papers. And that's a scam on me as an eighty year old.
When in the past, when um for the surveying you're looking that you're talking about.
Yeah, and I understand that surveying, they're not nice about the survey either, they don't have information, they just go in, they, yeah.
We've, that uh came up a couple times in the first go around with the the first proposed. Pipeline. Um and. We required them to use the statutory process to go into court and get an injunction. If the landlord was objecting to them coming on their property.
I can object, but I've already given them the okay, they said. By signing for this, I gave them the okay.
Yeah.
And I have no knowledge of what that is.
I'm not, I'm not sure that that's what you've done. But in the past, we've we've required them to. Go to the legal route, go to the court, get an injunction to enter the property, because we don't want any breach of peace. You know, where it gets uglier than it may already be, so um. So we did do that for the landowners as well, but did not want them to come on the property.
Okay, there again, I have understood and was told that they will keep harping on you. They will be at your door, they will be at your phone, if you open that door to anybody, I'm just gonna. Yeah, but I can't touch anything, I can't even open my door, I can't touch anything, because then they'll say, oh, gee, okay this. And they can come there three or four times a day, three and four different people, harping and harping and harping, until I break down and sign.
A lot of people don't under any pressure.
Yeah, see, they're illegally harassing, harassing there, that's the word, they're harassing people. I've been harassed here.
Dursing homes in their place, houses, getting people dying.
Right, and a lot of those probably don't even know what they're signing.
No, I didn't even know what I was.
Well, and I, can that be right, that they're approving or acknowledging that this is going to happen? Because they signed for something, they don't even know. Cause there's no return address, maybe was there on the card that you?
Well, there's a return address, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would be her, and then a return address would be.
Twenty eleven East Grand Avenue, but it doesn't tell you who it is.
But the postman takes that back to the.
Right.
I mean, the sender gets it back.
And he has since I signed the paper at the post office, is that the final document? Is that postman responsible to say these people signed, this is legal now?
All I signed when I picked up mine was I signed it, I was picking it up, that's all we signed too.
That's all I thought that the card was.
Yeah.
Look at the card, it has to be restricted certified, it has to be sent the right way, or it's null and void on his face.
Well, of course, we no longer have that paper.
Yeah. Because I would be curious, I mean, I've had had a teenage son that. I would be very skeptical if the mailman stopped and asked my fifteen year old or seventeen year old son or twelve year old daughter to sign something, does that? So I would have a hard time believing that that would legally commit somebody to that. Um.
I don't know, I just don't know what my personal step should be.
Legal counsel.
Yeah, we got that, but that isn't really helping, no, because you got your governor on your side.
Their side.
Well, I'm not, again, I'm not the attorney to answer that.
You know, pretty limited in what we can do too.
Probably that is.
Yeah, and we knew that before we even came came, but this is a step for us.
It's good to hear your voice. Were there any other comments for you guys, but let me stop, were you guys done or?
I think so, are we done?
Okay.
I have to ask him.
I just wanted, I didn't want to skip over you, I'll just move to the next one. Uh Anne, Robert.
Okay, guys, uh my name's Robert Nizario from Harden County, I am part of the Free Soil Foundation. It's an organization of five oh one C three, started by Congressman King. Congressman King is uh, he has promised to see this through to the end. Along with other folks uh in D C, uh Ramaswami and others. Um we are going to win this, and we're gonna win it on a constitutional issue, it is an illegal land grab. As well as us. Uh just a a safety nightmare for the residents, it is, it is harassment like never seen before. Eight hundred and forty eight parcels are on the chopping block for eminent domain, and that's page one. You guys are page two, the folks are being notified today and every day by. Bipartisan groups, Sierra Club, Bold Alliance, uh there's groups, uh C C I. Uh they all lean left, they're on your side. Free Soil Foundation and other groups uh lean right, uh and together, I've never seen these groups come together like they are now. Eight hundred and forty eight parcels, that is, that is the biggest land grab. For eminent domain in Iowa history, I only printed uh three of these, I'll I'll hook, I'll I'll put it in the middle. Because I didn't print myself one. Uh the first one, Exhibit A, is basically written to a landowner about insurance. They're not gonna cover you if something happens, the insurance companies, this one's from Northwest G F, I have no idea who they are. I got other ones from State Farms and others, if you allow this pipeline to come through, the liabilities fall on you, they cancel your insurance. Uh second page on that is from Steve Kinkle, he's on the forefront of this fight in Shelby County. He doesn't care if the county gets sued, he's gonna fight for your liberty under homeland rule. It is shameful, shameful that this group here says local control is gone. Our government starts right here in the county, if they're not willing to stand up for you, it's time for them to go. Time for, time for you guys to get a new board of supervisors, if that means putting a Democrat in with two Republicans. I like to see that. Thank you for the correction, second page. C O two pipeline checklist for county supervisors, there's thirteen points, and you guys have made some of these already. This is Steve Kinkle's list, two county supervisors across the nation, or excuse me, across the state. I've been in communication with all ninety nine counties, including you guys, I've never heard back from either one of you, except B J. B J has reached out, I'll give him that.
I think we have good discussions, Robert.
B J has reached out, but it's always, it's not, it's, it doesn't seem like a partner to fight this. It almost seems like in times adversarial. Bremer County Resolution, this is one I sent to you guys, cause it's very important, as a county. As a county, you guys can let the I U B or I U C know. Therefore, be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Bremer County, under the authority of I O Code and Alister Coke, would exercise any power. And perform any function it deems appropriate to protect, preserve the rights and privileges and the property of the county and its residents. And preserve and improve the peace, safety, health, welfare, and comfort and convenience of its residents. Based on the findings of, you even have court behind you. Uh Putney versus Iowa Utility Board, basically, they're saying that they do not see. This as a valid exercise to steal property under the eminent domain clause for public use. It isn't a public use pro- project, it isn't a utility. And we know it, we know what it is, it's a scam, it's a scam. It's a scam right from the start. This is fraud, and this is fraud, but we are asking you to to look at this. Bremer County Board of Supervisor Resolution, I believe thirteen counties. Out of the twenty nine that are affected are already passed this. There's an article by Steve Kinkle, and he he makes, he makes it all known uh to the. The new American, and it's getting national attention, um they are after eminent. They're out to break down the eminent domain laws in this country, it's not just Iowa guys. Oklahoma, we have teams in Oklahoma, in Kansas, in Nebraska, South Dakota, and North Dakota. Uh Minnesota, Illinois. Uh we're gonna fight this, uh setbacks, you talked about the term for. Designating how many feet from a building is called a setback. FEMSA has stated, and I forward that to all ninety nine counties, FEMSA has stated that these guys cannot be involved in route. Planning, but they have the power to institute setbacks. And I went to the FEMSA meeting in Des Moines, they they said it then, and they said it. And in all three Navigator, they sent a letter to Navigator, to Wolf, and to Summit Carbon Solution. Saying that your local government does have power to enact ordinances. Especially setbacks to to limit how many feet it can be from a hog building. Uh livestock yard, hospitals, so on so forth. But counties don't wanna be bold, and they don't wanna get sued, and unfortunately, that's, that is the hindrance. This is the motion to reconsider by Attorney Charlie Thompson, I'll set it before you. Um it has the strongest legal argument on how this goes forward. We can preach safety, we can preach everything else that this pipeline is doing, but on constitutional issue of the Fifth Amendment. But uh. Don't lose hope and keep the fight up, because your county should be here protecting you, and if they're not. You don't move. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there are public comments. And none, I got German.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say the best.
Been moving second to any discussion. Very done, all very sad.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.